Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of your Westland City Council to order. We will begin tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Pro Tem Melissa Sampe.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pro Tem Sampe. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Bowman.
President.
Councilman Hart.
Here.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Present.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Present.
Councilman Wishart.
Here.
Pro Tem Sampe.
Here.
President McDermott.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. As the president of this council, we will be making one change to tonight's agenda. We are adding an item under Consent Calendar Item G per Article 4 of the council policies and procedures. We are able to do this. So, under Consent Calendar Item G, there will be a motion to approve the recommendation of council in resolution of Hovis v. Westland. Thank you. We will now start tonight's meeting with a special announcement and presentation from Miriam Katie.
Thank you, council president, Pro Tem, and everyone up there. We so appreciate you. And of course, I'm here for Relay for Life. My name is Miriam, and Happy New Year, everyone. And I wanted to start out with some thank yous and appreciating mentioning our lead team that I'm really thankful to be a part of. Carol Nealis, Rhonda Graham, Kathy Graham, Kathleen Russell, Mary Hazel, Jill Azotz-Kates, Ashley Tatro, and Debbie Getz. Just amazing, and we're so thankful. Carol Nealis, I think I said, she's our fearless leader. And we, of course, want to thank the mayor and city administration for just always being so supportive. Kyle, Jackie, Kim, Parks and Rec, we so appreciate, and Park Rangers, we don't want to forget them, they're so crucial. WLND, of course, and city clerk. WLND, DPS. Livonia Westland Chamber, so supportive. The Marketplace, Don and Gail, and just a few of our, we're going to try to go fast here, some of our sponsors that I don't want to leave out. Meyer, of course, City of Westland, Dance Academy, The Cleaning Authority, Utes Funeral Home, Wayne Westland Federal Credit Union, Chef Tony, Westland Democratic Club, Western Wayne County, NAACP, Mayor Racy and Wayne City Council, Big B Westland, Westland City Council. Again, I mean, I'm plugging you guys left and right here because we so appreciate. Westland Fire Administration Public Awareness Committee, Westland Police Lieutenants and Sergeants Association, Westland Police Officers Association 1279, Magna Electronics, Two Arches Salon, Two Men and Junk Truck, Avon Independent Sales Representative Jill Wazot, Birds Bakery, Bush's Market, Carrabas, Flowers of Milton, Homestead Kitchen, Internet City Computer, Junemen Insurance, Knights of Columbus, Nankin Hardware and Hobby, Slice of the Eighties, Livonia, Texas Roadhouse, Tri-City Builders, Wayne Professional Firefighters, Visi's Pizza, and Midas Muffler, and Sports Van U. I just had to do that because, I mean, without our sponsorship and support, it's so hard to do this every year. So, I thank you for being patient on that. And our drumroll on the Pizza Palooza, this is the most that we've ever raised, $5,120.98. Thank you, a lot of you were there. We so appreciated that. And we are growing, outgrowing for sure, the location, but we so appreciate the City of Westland obviously supporting us always. So, a couple of the events that are coming up that really are, we feel that are important to mention, is we have what's called the First Lap. American Cancer Society does this all over. And it starts on January 11th. It's going to be a little burry on Saturday, but it will be from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Tatten Park in Westland, the farmer's market. So, we'll have hot chocolate, some goodies. You could take one lap if you can handle it. We're going to be out there, and you can warm up in the farmer's market, but it's just an amazing way to get our 2025 started. Now, we have something new coming up. On January 28th, at the City Hall here in Westland, is our Chili and Soup Event. It's called Ladles of Hope, and it's from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. And it will be, you know, on Facebook and pretty much all over. And that's adults $10 and children $5. And there will be drawings, 50/50 raffles, things like that, too. Going to try this out, and we're already having eight vendors so far that are very interested and working on hopefully getting a couple more, but we hope to see you there. I did pass out some flyers, and I'll have flyers around with me, too. So, I tried to talk as fast as I can, but once again, we so appreciate you, and I'll keep you updated moving forward because we have our kickoff in February, and I just hope everybody has a blast. Happy, healthy New Year 2025, and we'll see you soon. Thank you for your time.
All right. Well, thank you, Miriam, and thank you to the entire relay team. We certainly are grateful and appreciate all that you do. Okay, we will now move on to questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow members of the public at the beginning of the meeting to address council regarding items that are on tonight's business agenda. Questions may be asked and responded to during the agenda item following a motion in support from your city council. Is there anyone on my right? Is there anyone on my left? Yes, sir.
Hello. My name is Brett Mahaffey. I'm the current chairperson of the City of Westland Historic Commission, and I wanted to speak behalf on new business item four regarding the allocation of funding for the Westland Historic Village Park parking lot. This parking lot's a much-needed infrastructure for us, for the Westland Historic Village Park. Currently, there's really no designated parking spots outside of a couple, and there's a gravel patch that was left after a building was removed, and there's about three or four unmarked spots currently. When we have larger events, we try to close the entrance down so it's safer for children to walk around the village, especially when you're trick-or-treating and stuff, but without worrying about cars driving through there. The lot next to us was purchased years ago, and it's currently an empty field that was utilized. We utilize it for parking, but it's just a single entrance and exit, so it's kind of a pain to get in and out of there. When we have large community events, we do ask the Westland PD if they can help us and assist us, and especially with the police explorers, but it's not always an option. Last year, we held an LOEs presentation, and we had over 40 vehicles parked throughout the village. It was a nightmare. So, we're really hoping that city council will help us with our long-term goals by approving the funding for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on tonight's business agenda? Anyone? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Sawell. I'm a newly resident of Westland, and I'm also a 12-years-old traffic survivor. I was invited today by Councilwoman Emily Bowman, and I wanted to just basically speak on my perception and the survivorship that I have. I currently work at Avalon Hillen Center as an anti-trafficking specialist, and the need for county. Right now, we service Wayne County with, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Go ahead.
But, so currently, working with Avalon, we have resources for Wayne County, and we also do help resources in different tri-county areas. But living in Westland, it's not really a answer when it comes to resources and being a survivor. I had a situation with housing where up till now, there wasn't really looking on a website or looking online. There isn't a lot really here. So, being able to have resources for survivors like me and even victims, having somewhere to go and be heard, is very important, including collaborations with law enforcement. So, my question is, if possible, can we make it happen for a city where girls and boys, men, there's no age gap, it's every age, every gender, and in my caseload right now, 85% is children, and that's kids between the ages of 10 all the way up to adults 27. And it's familial trafficking, it's at home, it's authorities, it's teachers. We did a couple sex scenes during the NFL Draft and throughout with the US Marshals, but it's really needed in a city like this where now people are coming from Detroit and traveling here vice versa. People are being trafficked from airport routes and being pushed into Detroit. So, if possible, please see the importance of it for survivors like me to have another 12 years to go. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for sharing your story. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on tonight's business agenda? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we will close public comment on the agenda and move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
No motion.
There is a motion by Councilwoman Hart, supported by Pro Tem Sampe. Is there any changes to the consent calendar?
Yes.
Yes, councilwoman.
I move that we make move F onto new business, item F of this resolution. To new business, please.
Is the motion to move item F to new business? Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Councilwoman Bowman, supported by Councilwoman Hart. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
To move item F to new business, one A. Councilwoman Bowman.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
Councilman Wishart.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampe.
Yes.
President McDermott.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Now, back to the consent calendar as amended. Are there any additional changes to consent calendar? Any additional changes to consent calendar? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Minutes of the regular meeting held December 16, 2024. Approval of bid for official city newspaper. Administration recommended Don Nicholson Enterprises LLC doing business as Marketplace News commencing immediately and expiring on December 31, 2025. Mount budgeted $18,000. Approval of alerting service subscription renewal with code RED. The term shall be for one year in an amount not to exceed $8,474.94. Introduction of ordinance 248A116, an ordinance to amend the Westland zoning ordinance to show CB1 low-intensity commercial business district where I1 light industrial district is now shown in the area situated in the City of Westland described as 2207 Nelson, west side of Nelson, south of Ford Road. This item was, rezoning was approved by city council November 18, 2024. Adoption of prepared land resolution 5775 North Dowling. This was planning department number 2269, and this land division was approved by city council November 18, 2024. The last item approved on the consent calendar today, approval of recommendation of council in resolution of Hovis v. Westland, moving to payment of vouchers.
Is there a motion?
Support.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Bowman, supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. Is there any discussion from the maker? Is there any discussion from the supporter? Any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New business, item one. Confirmation of appointment of Bill Gabriel to the Police and Fire Retirement Board to fill an unexpired term effective upon council confirmation and to expire September 26, 2026.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Did the administration have anything they'd like to add?
Thank you, council president. Thank you, city council, for your consideration of Mr. Gabriel. Mr. Gabriel has a long distinguished history with the City of Westland. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for your willingness to continue to serve the city in this role. And just so everybody knows, Mr. Gabriel served on the Wayne Westland School Board. He was Board President of the William Faust Library. He served on the Westland Planning Commission. He served on the Westland Local Officers Compensation Committee, and then he was our city controller purchasing director from 2009 to 2012. So, thank you, Mr. Gabriel. We appreciate your service to the city.
Great. With any questions from the maker?
No, sir.
Anything from the supporter?
No, thank you.
Okay, is there any additional questions or discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Okay, hearing and seeing none, motion passes. Mr. Gabriel, please stand and be recognized.
New business, item one A. Adoption of prepared resolution to declare the month of January 2025 Human Trafficking Prevention Month in the City of Westland.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Bowman, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Is there any discussion from the maker?
Sorry. Yes, I put this on, I just, I kind of want to give a little history that I first got connected to human trafficking many, many years ago from learning about a woman who, as a high school student, was trafficked by her, by someone she really cared for. And it was just little things like that that came along, and then I got, and then I was connected with a city councilwoman from Livonia, just different things along my way, and I just felt that, you know, City of Westland needed something that actually supported this growing, this, I hate to call it industry, but a couple statistics are, they say, I think 27.6 million people are trafficked some way, and it's a very broad thing that we talk about with that. It's not just, it's any exploitation or forced or coercion, and I'm just, you know, I'm asking for support for this because I just think it's really important. And I know I only put January 2025. I did make a request to the administration that they would actually provide, put something on the website so that maybe this could be something that we actually look at on a regular basis. And there actually is a toolkit, I'll let people know, by the United States government, and I don't have all my information for it, but there's a toolkit that has so much information, and we have so many local resources, and I just thought it was really important to affirm that we see and we hear and we want to be a place where people can feel, that they can get the resources and do that. So, I just, I just kind of wanted to make mention of that, and I think, oh, and actually, in speaking with the comments that were made earlier, is, they said, I read here, since 2018, there has been a 69% increase in just child trafficking. And that was just, I don't, I want to make sure Westland is a safe place and that we can see when something might be happening. So, again, that's my comments. I appreciate the support that I can get.
Thank you, councilwoman. Anything from the supporter?
Yes, thank you. Council president. I would like to thank my colleague for bringing this forward. You know, human trafficking, as you say, there's a lot of resources, but what there isn't much of is hope. And so, I think what's the most important, especially to me, is that we have a sense of hope for these victims. You know, you can have all the resources in the world, but when you don't have the freedom to even escape what's happening to you, the resources do you no good. So, we have to work together as a nation and really as humans to make sure that modern-day slavery, because that's really what, you know, this leads into, is abolished, and that, you know, Westland does develop the tools and resources to provide hope for the individuals that have been victimized, and, you know, and I think, you know, the conversation can go on and on, but thank you for bringing this forward, and it has my support, and I, too, would like to see that become an annual or in perpetuity resolution. Thank you.
One second. Thank you, councilwoman. Is there, any, one second, I want to see if there's any additional discussion, any additional discussion from anyone else on the council? Yes, Pro Tem.
Yeah, I just also wanted to say thank you for bringing this forward. I think as a woman, sometimes, you know, there are uncomfortable situations for probably more at risk, as you mentioned, children, but I would like to see the administration maybe do something more with education materials, and perhaps it could be a partnership with the police department, having that available. I do think that we bring resolutions forward sometimes, and we don't do as much education. So, I agree. I think that signs, things to look out for, and then just education material, to have it available for those people that may need to be recognizing signs and things to watch out for. So, I would like to see that possibly added to the website socially as well. I would, I think that the administration probably would support that. So, thank you for bringing this forward.
I guess through the chair, I would like to have the, because I did hear today that, yes, there is something coming up on our website, and there are things going on, so I probably should have also made things, it was through the chair, could the mayor speak on this, and possibly Chief Dolly? I don't know if you have anything to say on this at all either, so just give me that opportunity.
Do you want to go?
Thank you, council president. Thank you, Councilwoman Bowman, for your advocacy and awareness of this issue. We've already talked to our IT director today. We're going to be making a tab on the city website, cityofwestland.com, with several resources that the councilwoman shared with us that may be useful and valuable to members of the community. Certainly, a topic that's sensitive to a lot of people, and unfortunately, there has been victims of human trafficking here in the city. It's not a common thing, but it's an unfortunate reality that this does occur from time to time, and we want to give people all the resources available. So, we will have that on the city website probably later this week. So, thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Chief, did you have?
Yes, we spoke last week a little bit about it. We have partnerships with the Attorney General, Dana Nuss's office, the information. We're planning on doing an awareness post soon anyway with some links as well. We're going to kind of piggyback after the resolution tonight. So, we do investigate all tips like that, and obviously, that's up to where we take, you know, it takes that community partnership to, for us to learn about it. We work with it, again, with our partnership throughout the different counties and everything as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, chief. Any additional comments? Great. Are there any additional comments from the council? I just want to say thank you, councilwoman, for putting this together and bringing this really important resolution to the city. As my colleague mentioned, you know, making this, I think, an annual resolution is going to be critically important because this is something that we're fighting each and every day and is not going to go away. You know, so I appreciate you raising awareness on us and putting this resolution together. So, thank you very much for that. Okay, any additional comments from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New business, item two. Adoption of prepared resolution authorizing the allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds for the Community Emergency Response Program in an amount not to exceed $25,000.
There's a motion by Pro Tem Sampe, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. I'm guessing there's discussion from the maker.
Yes, there is. Thank you, council president. This is something that I brought forward to the committee. It's a CERT program, so as mentioned, it's a Community Emergency Response Program allocated as $25,000. Very unlikely that we'll use this amount, basically to give a background of those that haven't been following this for the past several years, having me talk about it. It's going to allow us in situations that there could be a power outage, or a tragedy, or perhaps maybe even a fire, that we need to have volunteers. It's going to really allow us to equip members of the community to be volunteers, to help out. So, there's going to be training that's associated with this. Again, it is a volunteer program, but the chief is going to work with the county to secure a lot of the training, the gear, a lot of the equipment. So, this $25,000 is just as needed. So, perhaps if we need additional support, or training, or anything that the county does not equip us with, it's going to allow us to tap into that money. But as mentioned, very unlikely we'll use all of it, but this is something that I've seen, you know, with COVID, that we're not necessarily prepared for tragedy, and it's not just Westland, but many, many, many cities have a similar program to this, and we wanted to bring Westland up to speed. So, I don't know if chief has anything to say, or if he can say anything, but, you know, maybe we can stay after if anyone has any questions. But something I'm very excited about, so I appreciate the council's support on this, and we're getting it done.
Thank you, Pro Tem. Councilwoman Rakowski.
Thank you, council president. Yeah, this is something that was also on my list when we had our presentation, so, you know, it's a Melissa and Andrea thing once again. But, you know, what I wanted to make sure that the public recognized is, you know, one of the programs that I'm most familiar with is the one that's out of Redford, and Chief Jennifer Mansfield actually piloted that program, and they've been very successful. But what CERT volunteers are not is they are not uniformed public servants. So, let's make sure that we recognize these are not police officers, these are not professional firefighters, these are individuals that can take some of these, dare I say, more mundane tasks of maybe sitting on a downed power line, or doing some crowd control, or making sure resources are delivered to, you know, people who are out of powers. By no means should this be anything to look at as a replacement for our public servants because what we're really trying to do with this is allow them to do their specialized jobs, free up their time to actually do what they're trained to do, and also in the meantime, allow other individuals to feel more connected to their community and provide some of those services that, you know, do fall through the cracks, like fresh water and, you know, other things like that. So, it's about time that Westland has something in place similar to other areas, and I look forward to seeing the individuals that'll be volunteering for this. We had a long conversation with the chief about, you know, what type of people would be, you know, I don't want to say allowed to participate, but people will be vetted. You don't have to worry about, you know, somebody who shouldn't be walking through your door, walking through your door, and taking care of your elderly parent. So, it's an exciting addition to what we can offer for services for our
haven't been following this for the past several years, having me talk about it. It's going to allow us in situations that there could be a power outage, or a tragedy, or perhaps maybe even a fire, that we need to have volunteers. It's going to really allow us to equip members of the community to be volunteers, to help out. So there's going to be training that's associated with this. Again, it is a volunteer program, but the chief is going to work with the county to secure a lot of the, the training, the gear, a lot of the equipment. So this $25,000 is just as needed. So perhaps if we need additional support, or training, or anything that the county does not equip us with, it's going to allow us to tap into that money. But as, as mentioned, very unlikely we'll use all of it. But this is something that I've, I've seen, you know, with COVID, that we're not necessarily prepared for tragedy. And it's not just Westland, but many, many, many cities have a similar program to this. And we wanted to bring Westland up to, up to speed. So I don't know if Chief has anything to say, or if he can say anything, but, you know, maybe we can stay after if anyone has any questions. But something I'm very excited about, so I appreciate the council's support on this, and we're getting it done.
Thank you, Pro Tem. Councilwoman Rakowski.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, this is something that was also on my list when we had our presentation. So, you know, it's a Melissa and Andrea thing once again. But, you know, what I wanted to make sure that the public recognized is, you know, one of the programs that I'm most familiar with is the one that's out of Redford, and Chief Jennifer Mansfield actually piloted that program, and they've, they've been very successful. But what CERT volunteers are not, is they are not uniformed public servants. So let's make sure that we recognize these are not police officers, these are not professional firefighters, these are individuals that can take some of these, dare I say, more mundane tasks of maybe sitting on a downed power line, or doing some crowd control, or making sure resources are delivered to, you know, people who are out of powers. By no means should this be anything to look at as a replacement for our public servants, because what we're really trying to do with this is allow them to do their, their specialized jobs, free up their time to actually do what they're trained to do, and also in the meantime, allow other individuals to feel more connected to their community, and provide some of those services that, you know, do fall through the cracks, like fresh water and, you know, other things like that. So it's about time that Westland has something in place similar to other areas, and I look forward to seeing the individuals that'll be volunteering for this. We had a long conversation with the chief about, you know, what type of people would be, you know, I don't want to say allowed to participate, but people will be vetted. You don't have to worry about, you know, somebody who shouldn't be walking through your door, walking through your door, and taking care of your elderly parent. So it's an exciting addition to what we can offer for services for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there any additional discussion from the council? Yes, Councilwoman Baumann.
I just have a question. I think when this was, one of the times it was recently talked about, there was a gentleman that just moved to Westland that used to do this program. Is he still connected to the, some of the plans with, with putting, with rolling this out? And how this is going to be rolled out? Is that part? I don't know who to ask really.
Yeah, so I know that Chief and Director Awadi were working really closely with him. So I think after this meeting, once we're allocated, we'll probably get like a little subgroup together, a little working group together and pull him in. So that's what I would anticipate would happen. But yeah, it sounds to me like he's got experience, and it will allow the pressure of, you know, Chief being super busy, if we can have someone that is comfortable in, in helping us out and supporting us, it's a volunteer effort. So I think that he, he was interested, I'm assuming he still is.
Is there any discussion, Councilwoman? Okay, Councilman Hornbuckle.
Thank you. I just want to add to the support for this, because I'm definitely glad that this made it here. This is really a great program. I have family in Minnesota that is a part of a CERT program, and they talk about how it actually brings the community more closer together, and being able to help each other when a time of need. Right now, if something happened, everybody's running around looking at what I'm supposed to do, where this program will help educate the community and the people that want to really be involved in the community, come together and be able to help the community in time of crisis. So I'm definitely 100% supporting this, and I'll be one of the first ones to sign up for the program as well. Thank you.
All right. Any additional discussion from the council? I just want to say thank you to Pro Tem Sampey. For those of you that weren't able to attend any of our previous ARPA study sessions, she actually had a really nice and detailed PowerPoint presentation that was put together that outlined the CERT program, what its goals are, you know, what we hope to accomplish here in the city of Westland. So this is a long time coming, especially as she mentioned, in a post-COVID world where we have, you know, pandemics and natural disasters and just unfortunate events, to have our community have a greater level of preparedness, I think this will go and help a long way. One of the big areas where this can help too is in power outage mitigation. Far too often, our first responders, in particular our fire department, ends up playing babysitter to DTE's downed wires for who knows how many hours until DTE can get crews out there to, you know, rectify the situation. And having a CERT program will be better able to assist and lift that burden off of our first responders, our fire and our police in those kinds of situations. So I want to thank my colleague, Pro Tem Sampey, for her leadership on this. Councilwoman Rakowski as well, for advocating for this for a number of years. So really excited to support a CERT program, which I think is a long time coming here in the city of Westland. Any other discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New business. Item three, adoption of prepared resolution authorizing the allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds for the purchase of a transit bus for the Westland Friendship Center in an amount not to exceed $75,000.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Pro Tem Sampey. Is there any discussion from the maker?
Yes, thank you, Council President. So this is one of the items that when there was a change to our fiscal year budget, one of the items that we weren't able to satisfy at that point in time. There's a great need from our Friendship Center and our senior program to have reliable transportation, to keep up with the programming that's offered at the Friendship Center. So, you know, new director, Welcome Back, reached out to the subcommittee, and, you know, this is kind of one of those, you know, more or less a no-brainer. We're providing transportation, we're, you know, supporting our seniors. You know, I wish everybody could see how much programming that the Friendship Center really does provide for, for our seniors, and how many outings and activities that they really get to do that gives them, you know, a really vibrant existence in their post-work life. So I'm looking forward to you guys having the bus and maybe going on a tour with you guys, so I look forward to it.
Wonderful. Thank you, Councilwoman. Pro Tem Sampey.
Yeah, so thank you for supporting this. I know that the subcommittee brought this forward, something that I also was speaking with Director Welcome Back. I have a family member, I can just say it's my mom, and she goes on all the trips, and she's there every day. So she expressed the need for having this bus, because a lot of times, as mentioned, people don't feel comfortable driving distances, or they don't want to drive by themselves. So this, this bus, or van, or whatever, whatever we choose to get, is going to allow more people to go on these trips. And it really does give them a sense of satisfaction and life, and it keeps the vibrancy in, in everyday life for them. So I see the joy that it's brought to people that are members there, and the type of activities and things that they do is just, it's incredible. So the bus trips, the casino trips, and, you know, the reason why people may say, well, why do you need a bus? Well, because they're going two and three hours. So a lot of individuals either don't feel comfortable driving at night, or even long distance. So this is going to allow us an opportunity to, I believe, expand our programming and what we offer, and also our membership. So huge supporter of this. It's definitely something that was on the capital improvement list, and, you know, we had to make some cuts, but we wanted to make sure that ARPA took care of this. So I'm a huge fan of this item, and I'm really excited that we hopefully can improve this tonight. I'll be looking at everyone, but I, I think that there's support here, so.
Thank you. Any additional discussion from the council? Mayor, did you have something you wanted to add?
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, we have our senior resources director, Beth Walkenbach, here tonight. So she's the newest member of our administration here at City Hall. Thank you for all your hard work at the Friendship Center, also known as our Senior Center. If you could take a moment and just let everybody know what this, this bus will be used for, I think we all get the gist of it, but I want to give Beth a moment to speak on this request. So, thank you.
Director Welcome Back.
Thank you. Right now, we borrow Paul Motz's van, and it only allows us to take 11 people at a time. I have a list of all the things right now what we're able to do, and there's a lot of things that we've had to say no to, mostly summer items, because Paul has his program and has a lot going on with the kids. So right now, we do a monthly lunch club, which sells out very quick, because there's only 11 people that can go. If it's somewhere nearby, others can join, but if it's downtown, people don't feel comfortable driving that far. But every year, we go to Easter Market around St. Patrick's Day and get corned beef, Tigers' Games Lunch Club. We've gone to the Apple Orchard, we went to the DSO Downtown, Frank and Muth every year. And then it's also helpful, excuse me, for picking up like all the poinsettias for the Christmas party, pies, cakes, things like that that aren't going to fit or not safely in the back of a truck. Things we'd like to do, like the Ice Festival in January, Paul's using the vans, we had to put a kibosh on that one. Farmers markets in the summer around town, we like to do. Detroit Days trips, all kinds of fun stuff downtown, Belle Isle picnic, things like that. I also wanted to talk to the mayor about possibly starting for homebound people, like a grocery shopping program, if it's in our parking lot, you know, you don't want it to just sit there. So maybe we can set up something where monthly, we can pick up seniors who can't get out on their own, take them grocery shopping, bring the groceries back for them. So we have lots of ideas, it's just the need was there, and I really appreciate this.
Thank you, Director Welcome Back. Is there any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New business. Item four, adoption of prepared resolution authorizing the allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds for Westland Historic Village Park Parking Lot, construction and installation in an amount not to exceed $150,000.
There's a motion from Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. Is there any discussion from the maker?
Thank you. This has been another item that's been a long time coming. You know, we've recognized the need for some, you know, infrastructure repairs at the village park, and having a parking lot's going to, you know, expand the offerings, make it safer for the people that are visiting, you know, and, you know, just add to the charm of our little historic village park. So looking forward to seeing it, and, you know, what else will come from having the park kind of feel more finished even in, in one respect, and allow for more programming, and bring the public to the historic village park.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes. Yeah, this is another great opportunity to use the ARPA money to improve something that's valuable to the city, and give them the opportunity to do more things in the community, like weddings. Right now, I think it's really hard to do a wedding there. You can do one, but if it rains, you don't have a safe place to walk from your vehicle to the wedding, because you park on the grass and it's muddy. And that goes for events like trick-or-treating. You know, we have the, the kids out in the mud because it rained the night before. So I think this was a really good opportunity to, say, beautify our hidden gem, and make it more accessible for people to come to Westland and see what we really have to offer. So thank you for that opportunity.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilman. Is there any additional discussion from the council? Yes, Pro Tem.
So I wanted to thank the committee for bringing this forward. In addition to Council President, I think this was probably your first thing that you brought to us when we first started talking ARPA. So thank you. I know I see a few of the members and the audience for sticking with us. I think this was something that we had to try to sort out, but it was always something that we felt was really important. And I do see the value of making sure that we have the parking lot, as I've attended quite a few events there recently, and, you know, the parking is not ideal. So I think the parking lot will allow spaces to actually be carved out where people can park, and it's just really congested in that area. So this is going to help. I think this is first of many things that potentially we've talked about doing. I know the siding's falling off and a few other things. So I'm really excited that we can support this tonight, and I think it will help with bringing bigger events and better events and weddings, and just the improvement in that area.
Thank you, Pro Tem. Any additional discussion from the council? I do want to make a point on this. First off, thank you, everybody, for the support on this. Thank you really goes out to Brett, to Sharon, to Ryan, to Brenda, and everybody on the Historic Commission who's advocated and kept on us for a couple of years about this. For those who aren't familiar, Canton Township, prior to a tragic fire, they had had the Katie Boyer barn over there. And it was a big feature for, you know, weekly rummage sales, flea markets, but they also had, as, you know, my colleague, Councilman Hornbuckle mentioned, that we could potentially do here, things like weddings, family reunions, family parties, and events. Right now, given the current area to, you know, park over there, there's about four or five, as was mentioned earlier, you know, just kind of spots randomly around the Historic Village Park, and then there's a kind of a dirt lot. And if it rains, or there's any kind of inclement weather that affects it, it becomes a mud lot. So by allowing this parking lot and some new landscaping, it will beautify the park, as my colleague mentioned, and also open it up for people to want to have more events there. Not only city planned events, but, you know, potentially working to rent out the barn, rent out the historic village homes for, you know, family events, weddings, corporate and business-related events as well. So this is really going to go, hopefully, a, a long way in opening that up. I will say, and I will hope, and, you know, after corresponding with one of my colleagues as well, that, you know, parks and recreation, now that they have, you know, more staff there, will work to bring more programming there, and will work to help promote this as well, so it doesn't just become a parking lot that simps up the most of the year. We do want to get some investment out of it, but I think this is a long time coming, and I'm happy to see this, and what this can lead to for the Historic Village Park. And again, thank you to everyone on the commission for all your advocacy for this. Very much appreciate it. Any additional comments from the council? Sounds like we got a comment in the back there, but. Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New business. Item five, adoption of prepared resolution authorizing the allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds for the J.C. Park improvements in an amount not to exceed $150,000.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Pro Tem Sampey. Is there any discussion from the maker?
I'm going to let Pro Tem Sampey go ahead.
All you.
Everyone knows. So baseball's been my life, traveling across the country with my son for quite some time. So when I ran in 2021, I saw the facility, what we call J.C. Park, and I was severely underwhelmed with how we kept up with our parks. So I had been talking with Kyle Mulligan, and really started talking with him, what can we do to improve that so we can host tournaments, we can host appropriate games there? There's no lighting, poor lighting in some of the areas, the benches are falling down, there's, there's no dugout cover. So I've been extremely vocal on this, just because of a knowledge. So I don't, I don't know if anyone has been there recently, but it, it definitely is, it's definitely a mess. But with this money that's being allocated right now, we're going to be able, and I can, I can let the mayor speak on this, or Kyle, Director Mulligan, we're going to do the benches, we're going to do the dugout cover. It's not going to be a wood cover, it's just going to be vinyl, which is going to protect, if you're playing a game at J.C. Park, you'll have some type of protection. Because right now, what's happening is, anyone that utilizes J.C. Park, they're sitting there in the sun, beating down. It gives them no reprieve. So if they're out in the field and they're playing, they have no, no shade at all. So a lot of these kids, they, they, or teams, they don't like using our facilities, because, again, they're, it's, it's not updated. So this is going to allow us to create some park updates in addition to some lighting. So after dark, it's very hard for teams to utilize those fields, because there's no light there. So this is something I've been very vocal about since 2021, so I'm overjoyed that we're able to make this improvement at J.C. Park and start working on the additional parks. I know Rotary, and there's a few others that, you know, teams have utilized, and they don't like utilizing them on a paid basis, because they're not updated. So with that being said, thank you for bearing with me. I know I talk about this a lot, but I have been very vocal about making sure that our, our parks are updated, and it's something that I have always been passionate about. So I'm really, really, really excited that we can get this done.
Thank you, Pro Tem. Is there any additional discussion from the council? Okay, I do have discussion. Director Mulligan, if you could just speak to a couple of things. Number one, I know that the allocation here on the items says $150,000. There's kind of a more detailed breakdown in terms of where that money is going to specifically be used towards. I know Pro Tem kind of highlighted it a little bit. And then, number two, if you could also speak to the timeline of when, you know, the public and residents can expect to see some of these improvements begin?
Yeah, through the chair, I just wanted to thank the city council for putting this on the agenda tonight. J.C. Park, the ball field specifically, have been around for quite some time, and as the Council Pro Tem said, they are in need of some tender loving care, to say the least. The lighting in itself, or the original lighting for when that park was installed some time ago, so the upgrading to the LED lights will in turn save money down the road, because LED lights will be able to utilize less lights, and also have it safer. We've been putting Band-Aids on those lights, replacing bulbs as needed, so I appreciate the council allocating that money. In terms of the breakdown of the 150, estimated about $100,000 for the light upgrade, $30,000 for the dugout covers, and then $20,000 to repair a lot of the benches that are on the walkway that have been there for quite some time, that are leaning, need to be replaced, and things like that. So again, just wanted to thank the council for their support, so we can brighten up J.C. Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Mulligan. Is there any additional discussion from the council?
Yes, Councilwoman.
This is just a little bit of a sidebar. When, I want us to make sure that we remember the history of our parks as well. And recently, Raymond Gagnon had passed away, and he was a gentleman that I first met when I came onto council, because J.C. Park no longer held his father, Virgil R. Gagnon's name. And I was charged with making sure we renamed J.C. Park the Virgil R. Gagnon J.C. Park. Mr. Gagnon was instrumental in the formation of Westland becoming a city, and I just wanted to extend my condolences. It's just very fitting that we're making improvements to the park to Raymond's family, the Gagnon family, many of which that still live in the community. So it's just one of those kind of kismet moments, where perhaps somebody's just watching over his dad's park, so, thanks.
Thank you for that, Councilwoman. That was very nice. Is there any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none. Motion passes. We will now move on to public comment. Everyone speaking before the council shall do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly conduct of the business meeting, personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. The speaker can ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the three minutes is up or the person is done speaking, whichever comes first. Is there anyone? Public comment on my left? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Lee McCrum, and I'm a resident of Westland. And it's more of a concern that I have. I'm concerned about a vacant home that's next to me and that I'm aware it's been vacant for about nine to 10 months. And I believe it's in foreclosure. So I'm concerned for a number of reasons. And I've talked with several of my neighbors, and they also share my concerns, that it may be health and safety issues there. There may be pest infestation, structural issues, potential for bringing down property values. And it may be a potential site for crime or squatters. Excuse me. I do know that in terms of, I've looked at Zillow and how reputable that is, I'm not sure. But it indicates that the lender has taken ownership and may list it for sale as a foreclosed property in the future. And that was as of this past August. So I know this past summer, a neighbor cut the grass. I know that there is a tree leaning over in the backyard pretty badly. And actually, from another neighbor, today, DTE is going to evidently take care of that tree. I have contacted Neighborhood Services here because the mailbox is stuffed and can't get any more mail in it evidently. And they were going to come by, take a look at it, and I guess put a notice on the house that it may be listed as a vacant property. But I'm just wondering, there's no for sale sign on it. So my question is too, is a lender held responsible for taking care of a property? And as a neighbor and a neighborhood, we're concerned about it. And I just don't know exactly what to do about it, other than to let people know. So...
Thank you for coming forward, ma'am. We can actually have, Director, would you be willing to talk to her after the meeting? So our building and planning director is here and Neighborhood Services. So he'll be willing to capture information and talk to you, and then we'll go from there. So if you want to hang around until the end of the meeting, we'll get your information, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Is there anyone on my right wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
I want to start by saying my name's David Kacharzik. I used to be a mechanic for the city Inkster and decided to move here to Westland and living in the Colonial State condominiums. And there's the Neighborhood Watch signs out front. And I've been very active in Inkster with the Neighborhood Watch. So I've been going around to different departments trying to get information. I've been talking to Melissa Sampay. She's been trying to point me in the right direction. And all we're getting is it's private property. You have an HOA. There's many things going on in there. And I'm trying to establish communication with the police department. I brought the president with me of the board because they're saying that I'm not on the board, that I have no say so. But they're giving me the authority to try and get to the bottom of these issues. And that's why I'm here.
Okay. Well, what we can do, Chief, would you want to stay afterwards to talk to the gentlemen and see what specific issues they might be having over there and what we can do?
President Paris and the community officers have been in contact. We can follow up after if you stick around.
All right, cool. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. We'll get you taken care of. All right. Is there anyone on my left? Public comment? Yes, Ryan.
Happy New Year. My name is Ryan Everhard. I'm the president of the Westland Historical Society and also a commissioner. I just want to announce a few events that are coming up. January 14th, next Tuesday, is the society's meeting at the museum in the Row House at 6:30. Everybody's welcome. On Saturday, January 25th, we will be having a painting at the village. After the last time I was here, I asked if we could do paint and sip. We are now a non-alcoholic event for this one. We will be researching for a future event. Tuesday, January 28th, is the Historical Commission meeting at the village at 7:00 P.M. And Saturday, February 8th, at 1:00, in the Row House at the museum. This is a free event. John Grace, our VP at the Historical Society, is giving a history of bicycling. If anybody's interested, come on out. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Is there anyone on my right? I believe I saw a hand in the back. Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is John Small. I work at the Westland Shopping Center in the basement at what is known as the Dance Academy. I wanted to touch on the subject of the sex trafficking. It would be nice if we could go a little further in the city with this instead of just opening up some tabs. Let this be the start of something that we pursue. Because in the Westland Shopping Center, we've had a few incidences. One was which we had two sex traffickers working in tandem, a male and a female. One of the ladies went into the bathroom. The female sex trafficker followed her in. As she was leaving, followed, and they were communicating by walkie-talkie or headsets, and followed her out, told which door she was coming out. And she started to panic because she saw the lady following her and radioing, which is when she came into the studio, and that's when we got involved. Another one involved one of the students, actually, that was at the Dance Academy. So this is something that's just been going on, and those are just a couple of the cases. And it'd be nice if we could actually come together and do something in this community that we can actually keep an eye on it, along with all of the massage parlors that we have. They're bigger than 7-Elevens, you know, in our city. We have about five of them within a mile of the mall. And they can't all be doing legitimate business and support that. Because we do have a legitimate massage parlor or massage therapy people in the mall that actually do a legitimate business. So if there's something that we could do to look into that, to take this a bit further, because we know what kind of problem is presented not only in our city but in our country, and it'd be nice if we could get ahead of it and maybe even set an example for other cities.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on my left? Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. My name is Lawrence Howell again. I would love to see an actual community space where we can bring in, like, families and teachers and parents. I know for me, human trafficking up until recently was not even a word, nor was sex trafficking, taken away separately from labor trafficking. But as a survivor, I have found that it is really important that we do it as a community to learn myths and facts. Because when you go with just myths, you run people scared. At one point, there was on TV so big about the white van, and we were snatching, or it only happened overseas, until you're actually in it and realize that my story was unique of me running away at 14 off of a simple decision. Of everything I could have did right to stay home, I wanted to just be grown because I didn't know what the ideology of being an adult really meant. But to see a world where the moment you say trafficking, you have people either on the spectrum of extreme fear or people on the spectrum of, oh, this only happens overseas. It's a neighbor. It's everywhere. It's everybody. Everybody can be a target versus everybody can be a predator. Everybody can be an attacker versus everybody can be a victim. But having an intentional... This is cool. The issue with this for me is I've set round tables like this for a year and a half. If community can't come out, they're not going to listen to an official or an officer. They need a mother. They need to see somebody who actually had lived experience and actually can say, hey, you know what? Actually, that's a myth. And yes, I agree with the gentleman right there. It is some massage parlors, but not all. But the unfortunate part is you don't know what you don't know because you only take what you hear. So intentionally, really having a community come together would be having some mothers and fathers and some children in the room. And we can center it down and make it elementary or whatever the age group need. Simple things are stranger danger. Simple things is bringing back dining room tables. But if we can have, like, a live this again, I absolutely would not mind coming back. I did an event about two months ago with Reverend Pascal for mental health. And most of my journey and my story right now, why I am an anti-trafficking specialist, is because I didn't see a me until God created me and gave me my story and my vision to give the story to the world. So if we can really, really dispel some myths while we're making the tab and the website, it would really be intentional to today's times because mothers like me don't have opportunities like this often. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. And if you could hang out afterwards, too, I think some of us on council would love to talk with you and capture your personal information to, you know, explore some ideas further. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on public comment? Yes, Ray.
First of all, I want to say Happy New Year to everybody. I was trying to, see, I'm taking notes now, too. So I was looking at this, comparing to this, and looking at this. I had a hard time. This is for me. It could be for some other people, too. Trying to follow you guys tonight when you're talking about this, that there's no numbers or... See, everything's kind of jumped right into all one here. So it's really hard to understand this. I just wanted to share that. Maybe, hopefully, you can make that better. And anyway, what a year, 2024. Ray have a button here. Go Lions, go. I've been watching them and my friends. I put it on Facebook. They love it how I say about the scores. They're doing really well. And also, I want to thank the mayor for, I got my three-year term now for the disability accuracy. And I'm going to keep driving the diversity and inclusion. That means if I'm in the community, it could be in Livonia, wherever I am at. It's important that my name tag really shows people, say, Ray, that is great what you're doing. So I'm going to be reaching. Now, I already talked to Daryl today. I want to train the five new fire guys because I trained them last year. I trained the police department, and I'm taking it to other places, too. And I think it's important because the diversity to me, I don't want to see it fall through the cracks again because everyone should be treated with dignity and respect. And with my seven members, we're going out there. We're not going to just be sitting near City Hall. So I wanted to let people know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. We appreciate you. Is there anyone else? Yes, Mr. Nicholson.
Thank you, Council President McDermott and council and mayor. I just wanted to step up and say thank you for renewing our contract for the city, for the legal notices. We've been happy to work with the city now for a number of years, and I think everything's going really well. It's been great working with the city clerks, LeBlanc's staff and everything. And I think we're saving the city quite a bit of money as well. So I'm happy to bring that back to us. Also, I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year and hope everybody has a great summer in 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Is there a hand up there in the back? Anybody else? Okay. Nobody else wishing to speak? Okay. We will close out public comment. And we will begin with comments from the administration.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, City Council residents in attendance tonight. First of all, Happy New Year to everybody. I hope you have an awesome 2025. We've had a lot of progress in the city of Westland in 2024. Together, partnering with our city administration staff, city council, and residents and businesses, we've accomplished a lot for the city. I'm really excited to see what we can accomplish in 2025. It sounds so futuristic to say 2025, but I'm sure we'll all get used to it after a few weeks. A few of the speakers tonight talked about trafficking and crime and police-related issues. It's interesting timing because we have a public forum coming up, which is part of my mayor's listening tour. It's next week, and it's going to be at the police department. We're going to get in depth about some of the innovations and techniques that our police officers are using to fight crime in the city of Westland. We've seen a lot of progress the last couple of years, working with Chief Dolly and all of his great officers. But this is, the mayor's listening tour stop. It's the first one in 2025. It is next week, Tuesday, January 14th, 5:30 P.M. at the Westland Police Department. So we can get a little more in depth on some of these issues. And I appreciate all the speakers tonight bringing forward these issues. So thank you. And I do hope you join us and council members and everybody else at the city residents. Everybody's welcome to join. There's going to be plenty of room there. Again, it's next Tuesday, January 14th, at 5:30 P.M. I'd also like to invite everyone to our annual Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day Ceremony, which is January 20th. It's a Freedom Walk right here at City Hall at 9:00 A.M. if the weather is permitting. If it's in the single digits like last year, we will cancel it and just have coffee inside. The ceremony starts at 10:00 A.M., and we have several great speakers planned. We're going to have an inspiring program that reflects on Dr. King's legacy with musical performances. And the keynote speaker this year is Elder Jonathan M. Winnie. And it's going to be a great event, so I invite everyone to please come and participate. I also want to remind you that city offices, including the recycling center, the 18th District Court, and the library will be closed in observance of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. holiday. Garbage and recycling pickup will not be affected that week. And then I also want to take this opportunity to say happy birthday to our finance director, Steve Smith. He's been at the city a long time. Happy birthday, Steve. Thank you for all of your great work. And lastly, I would just like to mention that Mike Kaylee is a former Westland resident. His family has a long history in the city. You might know of Kaylee Park. It's split into east and west. But I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Mike Kaylee for his donation of four benches for Kaylee Park, which will complement new playground equipment, which we've invested in this park. We'll have two benches on Kaylee Park East and two benches at Kaylee Park West. So thank you, Mike, for your donation. We really appreciate it. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Any comments from the city attorney's office?
I just want to say thanks, as always, to the council for suffering me to be out here with you. Happy New Year to everybody. And thanks again for having me out, but no other comments.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Grisco. We will begin tonight with council comments from Councilwoman Rakowski.
Thank you, Council President. Well, Happy New Year, everyone. I'd like to thank, and pardon me, Mr. Gabriel for your commitment to being a part of our police and fire retirement board. I always say service to your community is the best work of life, and I think you have quite the legacy built up there for yourself. So thank you. One of the events that I got to attend recently was the Fire Department Retirement Recognition Ceremony, which was a labor of love by, I believe, two of our firemen who are sergeants and admin at this point, that took the time... that took the time to contact those that are surviving and personally get to know them. And if they had passed, be able to talk to their family. And there's a beautiful recognition wall at Station One that has their helmet shields for each and every member that had retired and also had, has the separate shields for Todd Stanaway and Brian Wilkie, who were line of duty deaths for the Fire Department. So I think all told, it was about 13 years of, of work and research. So, you know, just to be able to attend was an honor and a privilege. It was wonderful to see, I use some of the vernacular, the old timers come out and, you know, share some of their stories with the young guys. So it was a really beautiful thing. It's, I wish everybody had an opportunity to, to see it. But I think it's, I think it's something very special that Westland has that a lot of other departments haven't had an opportunity to capture and certainly didn't spend that much time of an investment to get to know those individuals because they're, you know, oh, it's just a retiree. No, it's not just a retiree. It's a, it's a person that cared for your community. So I'd just like to thank, let's see, I believe, I don't know, Joe's title. I know his name. I don't know his title. What, Chief, if you would, please. Assistant Fire Marshal Witovich and Sergeant Polite for their dedicated service to the legacy of the Fire Department. That was really awesome. Other than that, I'm just really looking forward to some of the winter time activities in the city of Westland and, you know, Miriam's kickoff of the relay. And I'm really excited about the chili event. I really am. So with that, be kind and take care of one another. And we'll see you in a couple of weeks. Happy 2025.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We will now hear from Councilwoman Wishart.
Thank you, Council President. Happy New Year to everyone. My new dad. Now I feel everyone's paying the kids. Waking up at 3:00 AM is a lot of work. So I want to say shout out to all those good parents out there. Hopefully I can join you guys' ranks in the near future. So far, I'm just trying to focus on sleep. That is all I got. Happy New Year, guys.
Yeah, can we get a name here?
Kid's name is Douglas Gale Wishart III. Sorry, sleep is hard. He's named after me. He's the third Douglas Gale Wishart III.
Wonderful. How cute, how cute. All right, we will now hear from Councilwoman Emily Bowman.
Thank you. Okay, so yes, Happy New Year. I definitely want to say Happy New Year. And I want to thank, I want to thank the council and the mayor for supporting the resolution. And I agree with, and I want to thank Ms. Sewell for coming tonight. And obviously, I agree, one of the things I was writing down is that this is, this is a first step. As I did the research to put the resolutions together, I actually looked at like several different city resolutions and I was reading a lot of stuff. And I'm a geek that way. Sometimes I kind of go a little deep on stuff to make sure that what I'm putting forward is representing for, you know, at this point, it's represent Westland. I read the city of Minneapolis and that one doesn't represent Westland. So I, so I really worked on making sure that it was something that we could do and that it was the first step in, you know, in a partnership in providing education as well as protection. And I think that's a key part of this is that it's, it isn't, I realize I'm like, I just don't want it to be a piece of paper. I want to do that next thing. And I know some of the statistics I just want to repeat is that 27.6 million people globally are trafficked. And that's not just sex trafficking. That's all of it. And that's just a huge amount. And that includes every state and territory. Just in, in Michigan alone, 300 cases have been reported from the 2024 report. And that's, we know that that's not, that's a tip of the iceberg probably of that. And I think about the fact that we, you know, we talked a little bit tonight about bringing the community together, you know, doing all those things. And I think that, that, you know, if, if anything that 2025 might do is, is that year that we are going to do some things that actually bring our community together in a different way that we might not have thought about. And I think that this is an opportunity. And I just, I want to let people know that just because from, just from starting that education is that when they talk about trafficking or as the government, the United States government calls it, calls it trafficking in persons is the new phrase, the term, terminology that they're using. Trafficking in person, I think is what they call it. It's any forced or fraudulent recruitment, harboring or transportation of people for labor, labor or commercial sex. And that's kind of just minimal. And as Ms. Sewell mentioned, anyone can be trafficked. While there are certain characteristics or populations or what, you know, certain people that might be potentially more, anyone in any industry, in any neighborhood. Like I mentioned, it was, I can't remember how long ago it was, but the woman from Birmingham, Birmingham, Michigan, without speaking, and she was trafficked by a guy that she really had to crush on. And so she didn't know and he scared her. She, he thought, she really thought he was going to hurt her family. And so she finally came out in, I can't remember, I don't know all the dates, but basically I think she would have been in high school. So it was 20 years ago that she was in high school. So I know that. And then she came out and started talking about it. And I call, you know, it gave me the terminology of next door trafficking. You know, that you, it could be in your neighborhood and that close. So I don't want to, I want to mention a couple, a couple of other things too. Is it can be in person or online? And we, you know, we talk about things going online and things moving online. And there are stories from 2020 that are just really sad because of how different things became when we, when kids are more on, when anyone is more online and things like that. It can be by strangers or people you know. And as a community, and again, I want to touch on what Ms. Sewell was talking about. As a community, what they say is, it says, "We can help prevent human trafficking by building individual, community and societal understanding and resilience and address the conditions that contribute to exploitation." It requires a successful response, requires a coordinated, community-wide effort. So it's not just what we do like with the, you know, that's just a start. I want, and I believe it's just a start to do this. But every individual, family, community and organization can be a part of enhancing human trafficking awareness, prevention and response. And that's why I didn't call it awareness. I called it, you know, being just prevented. And I, one thing I also read here that I thought was very interesting is that they do say that people who have experienced human trafficking have irrelevant perspectives and expertise and can engage and collaborate to develop and strengthen those trafficking-related services and programs. And I, so I think, again, I thank you for coming and speaking out and sharing your story in, you know, previously as well. And I think that we have an opportunity. And I think this is, you know, with, with a number of the things that we're working together, even, you know, the cert is more community oriented. You know, just even just today, there's some things that we're moving forward that really should be able to and have that opportunity to bring our community together that we're really looking out for each other in a different way than maybe we have in the past. So again, I want to thank everyone for doing that, for helping with that. And I think that might be it for me tonight. Again, Happy New Year. And I think that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman. We will now hear from Councilman Jim Hart.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening. Real brief today because I don't think many others are going to be brief. Happy, Happy New Year. Wanted to wish you all just a Happy New Year. And also, for those of you who remember, Councilmember Michael Care. So those who remember him, it's not a story about Mike Care. However, there is another birthday today. His mother turned 101 today. There's a little note in the social meeting that kind of really stuck out to me. He goes, "Back then, every road was dirt except Ford Road, which was two lanes. Still had an outhouse at the homestead on Hicks Road and water was available in the kitchen with a hand pump. No phones, outdoor lighting such as streetlights." So she's still with us today and that's how much history she knows about the community. So I thought that was really interesting and I wanted to share. So Mike Care, tell your mom I said Happy Birthday and I'll send you a text a little bit later too. So that's all, Council President. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We will now hear from Councilman Hornbuckle.
All right, thank you. Happy New Years, everyone. Welcome to 2025. Shocker, right? I want to thank, actually, I want to thank the last council president for putting me on the ARPA committee. And when I got on the ARPA committee, my main objective was to make sure that we were spending the money properly but making sure that we were touching the whole community. And as you see today, a part of the money is going a little bit everywhere around the community, the community, and bringing the community together. So thank you for allowing me to do that. Thank you guys for passing these things through. And for the people in the audience that's here for the ARPA funds, thank you for your patience. I know it's been a long ride and frustrating, but we're getting there. We're getting things done. So thank you for coming out and sticking with us. I think that's all I have. I would like to send out my prayers and condolences to the victims out in New Orleans. You know, it's, it's unspeakable what's going on. But my hearts and prayers go out to their family. And thank you for this opportunity. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmen. We will now hear from Pro Tem Sam.
All right, thank you. Happy New Year, everyone. Thanks for coming to the meeting today. I see some new faces in the audience, which is, is always good to see community involvement. Mr. Katarzic, I know that it's been touched on, but I know we've talked about the issue. So I'm hoping that we can get connected with the police department. I know there's building issues where people don't have a certificate of occupancy for rentals. You have peoples that have tabs that are not updated. And there's quite a bit of issues that you and I have talked about. So what I'll do is I'll make sure I'll stay after talking with chief. I know that it's not just one thing. There's multiple different things going on. So it's really important as a taxpayer to make sure you feel heard and represented. So I know that chief was willing to stay behind. I'll also stay behind to talk with you on that. Wanted to congratulate Mr. Gabriel. Thank you so much for your service. I know that the Police and Fire Retirement Board is very excited to have you on board. So thank you so much for stepping up to the plate. I know that it's been talked about by Miriam, but the latest of hope, poor Miriam was trying to talk so fast. I know she had a lot going on. So I'll plug this because this is a new event for them. So the Pizza Palooza, I think she left something here for everyone. But the Pizza Palooza was something that has always grown year over year. So this was the Relay for Life, Westland, Western Wayne Counties version of like good soups and good chili. So this is on January 28th here at Westland City Hall. So I know this is new. So they're still doing their 50/50 in raffles, $10 for adults, five for children. So this is a really creative idea, Miriam, that I know that's going to take place here. So I'll be supporting this. I'll definitely be attending and I'll share the word too. It's great that you guys are doing it in winter. So I am looking forward to it. So thank you for bringing that up. So let me just make sure I, okay. All right, so cert, I know I talked about this already, but I wanted to thank the city council for supporting this. As I mentioned, I've been talking about this for quite some time. So I agree with Councilwoman Bowman that this is, this was always my thought is to bring people together, to be a community effort, to be watchdogs. You know, like I've always dreamed of a community in Westland, I've lived here my whole life, is supporting our community. You know, wrapping our arms. If someone's down, we support them. If, you know, we need to keep an eye out and watch and volunteer, like our first responders are, are all over the place. So this is an opportunity for individuals in the community to raise their hand to say, I'll be, I'll be there to support my community. So I really thought this was a great idea to have this community emergency response program. And I'm overjoyed that we can do this tonight. I also am overjoyed about the park improvements, which you've heard me talk about. So I'll, I'll be connecting with you, Director Mulligan. I know that I bother him about this and he's probably annoyed by it, but it's okay because it's given us an opportunity to improve our parks and it's been long overdue. So I want to thank Director Mulligan for your work on this. I know it's something that we've talked about for a long time. And thank you, Ms. Sewell, for, did I say it right? Hopefully I did. Sewell, okay. Thank you for sharing your story. I want to just thank you for coming up and being an advocate about something that you're passionate about. A lot of people that are passionate about certain things, they don't say anything. They just sit back and they figure it out. So thank you so much for coming up here and being brave. And it looks like you have support here today. And I, I'm really supportive of this as well. So hopefully I agree that the police department, we can come up with some ideas. Myself and council president were like, hey, could there be a PSA or something? But I think it's important when we bring resolutions forward that we always think about ways that we can branch out and do other things. So thank you for, for coming out today. I really appreciate that. And I'll stay around as mentioned. And if you want to bounce any ideas off me, I'd be happy to talk with you. Councilwoman Rakowski mentioned this. And I did have a chance to go to Station One and just see the amazing display. I wanted to also give kudos to Sergeant Polite and Assistant Fire Marshal Witovich. It was, it was a fantastic event. But you know, when I walked away, what was more impressive, and I'm sorry to embarrass you, hopefully this doesn't, Sergeant Polite, is the amount of time that you put in with getting the research. I had no idea that you actually made calls and visits to the home of every living retiree to get their story and to invite them. The brotherhood, it almost made me want to be a firefighter. The brotherhood and the support that you could feel in the room was unreal. So I wanted to thank you both. And I know chief really appreciated this too, putting that event together because I walked away just feeling proud. I always feel proud of our Fire Department, Police Department. But I felt so proud that we can honor those that served our community, those brave individuals that, you know, the stories that were told. And, and it was, it was truly a magical event. So congratulations. Thank you for all the time and effort. You could really tell how calculated that large board was and it was evenly spaced and the numbers and the colors. It's something to be seen. I know you'll welcome the community to stop by Station One. But if you haven't seen it yet, I really would encourage you to stop by Station One and take a gander because it, it, it took my breath away. I thought it was, I thought it was beautiful. So thank you. I thought it was, I thought it was beautiful, so, thank you, thank you so much for putting that together. And I also am looking forward to seeing everyone at the Freedom Walk-in Ceremony, that's, as the mayor mentioned, on Monday, January 20th, and the ceremonies, the walk's at 9, the ceremony's at 10, so, I know that everyone's welcome to attend that. I'm just going to wrap up and say that our next meeting is actually on a Tuesday, so, January 21st at 7, and go Lions. I knew Council President would say it, I wanted to beat him to it. So, go Lions, if you're a football fan, last night was pretty awesome, right? It was a heck of a game. They rocked it yesterday, yeah, so, the Vikings, I think they weren't very happy this morning, and leaving Ford Field, it was, yeah, they weren't happy. So, like I said, the next meeting is on the 21st at 7. Everyone have a fabulous, fabulous start to your New Year, and be safe and kind with each other, and we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you, Pro Tem. Well, good evening and Happy New Year. As my colleague, Councilman Hornbuckle, mentioned, you know, my heart, too, goes out to the people of New Orleans who suffered a horrific terrorist attack and tragedy on New Year's Eve and New Year's Day, so, my thoughts, prayers, and my heart goes out to the people of New Orleans, not only the 10 victims who lost their life, but the dozens who were injured and the first responders who responded to such an awful attack. I wanted to thank Ms. Sewell for sharing her story here, that is very courageous and brave to get up, not only in front of all of us here in this auditorium, but to get up in front of the entire community and share that story. Thank you for your courage and bravery in bringing that forward, and as my colleague mentioned, we would like to stay after and talk with you about what kinds of, you know, public awareness-type events do you have in mind that we can listen to you about and see what's in your idea bank to, you know, help promote awareness on sex trafficking, so, thank you for coming out to the meeting and raising awareness to that. I want to thank Don for renewing his contract with us as the city's newspaper. Some folks have said over the years, "Why does the city in the digital era have to keep doing this?" Well, that's because the state has still not changed the law in regards to public notices needing to be printed in a newspaper, it's kind of an archaic state law in the books that they need to change up in Lansing, and the Free Press and News don't bid on that anymore for local communities like Westland, and so, we have a trusty, reliable friend in old Don Nicholson here to help bail us out, so, thank you for that, Don. I want to thank a couple of my colleagues here, first, sitting next to me, Pro Tem Sampe for her, tireless work on the CERT program here, this has been a long time coming for, you know, over two years. As I mentioned earlier, she put together a really great, detailed, and informative presentation on what CERT is and how it will benefit, you know, the community at large, so, thank you for your leadership on that, really, really appreciate that and getting it off the ground. I know Councilwoman Rakowski was a part of that as well, so, thank you for your leadership there, getting CERT off the ground. And then, thank you for the resolution being brought forward today by Councilwoman Bowman. Again, you know, really important resolution and an important story to be shared on sex trafficking. Certainly, we want it to go far beyond the resolution, we want action to be taken, but the first step in anything is always raising awareness and bringing something to light, so, thank you for shining the light on a very serious problem here, not only in our community, but across the state of Michigan and across the country, so, I appreciate your efforts on that. I want to thank each of my colleagues for supporting all the different ARPA items tonight, but in particular, one that I've been, you know, advocating, which is the Westland Historic Village Park parking lot, I've been able to partner with the commission and folks there at the Historic Village to make this happen, and thanks to the votes of everybody up here on council, we're going to make a major improvement over there, and I think, take a big step forward, so, thank you for your advocacy, thank you for everyone on the council for supporting that. While we're giving out thank-yous, thank you to Mr. Gabriel for stepping up and continuing to serve the community, I know you've had just about every capacity, except maybe being on here in city council, so, it is an election here, so, maybe, but, no, but thank you for stepping up to serve here on the commission, we appreciate that, thank you to the administration for putting them forward, so, we appreciate your continued service here in the Westland community. With regards to ARPA, I just wanted to let everybody on council and in the public know, I have already put in a request to the administration, and they will be getting us the updated ARPA figures as far as where the spending is at and how much of the ARPA taxpayer funds that we have left to allocate, so, once we have that number, that's something that I'll be sharing on my social media at Councilman Mike McDermott on Facebook, so, you can stay tuned for that, and then council will have the update there as far as the updated numbers. I'd like to congratulate my colleague, Councilman Wishart, on the birth of his new son, Douglas Gale Wishart III, and the many sleepless nights that seem to be lying ahead. I only have a dog, and she only wakes me up at about 8:00 in the morning to get up, so, I think it's a non-comparable here, so, I hope he gets some sleep, but again, congratulations to you and your wife on the birth of your new son, very exciting to have a holiday baby, so. And then, just a couple of other things, I wanted to give a special thank you to the Westland Fire Department, but in particular, to Sergeant Chris Reyna and Sergeant Dave Polite. I had the opportunity this past Thursday to do a ride-along, didn't quite do the full 24 hours like I did last time, did about 18 of the 24 hours, and then kind of poo-pooed out at about, I don't know, 1:00, 2:00 in the morning, something like that, but I want to thank, you know, Sergeant Polite, Sergeant Reyna for hosting me. I started out the day at Station 3, so, from there, I got to ride on Quint 3, we did a couple of different responses throughout the day on Quint 3, that's one of our big ladder trucks, if you don't know what the Quint is, it's one of the big ladder trucks that you see. Had the opportunity to actually be in the truck, ride along on a couple of different responses and emergency calls for service that we had there from Station 3. From there, I had the chance to go over to Station 1 and have kind of a late lunch with some of the guys down at Station 1, far too many down there to mention here, so, I would be remiss if I tried to mention everyone and left someone off, but that is, Station 1 is our busiest station, and so, they had runs going in and out while I was down there trying to enjoy lunch with some of the guys, and that really goes to show that when they're, you know, this is just me on a one-day ride-along, when they're out there, busier than ever in the city, trying to come back from the next run to grab dinner, or grab lunch, or take a bathroom break, or, you know, just sit down and decompress from the last response that they had, and the same thing goes for our Police Department, too, because I know that they're busier than ever, they don't get to do that, because a lot of times, they're back at the station, and five minutes later, the calls come in, and they're right back out, and that's especially true, excuse me, Fire Station 1, where that is truly our busiest station, Fire Station 1, Rescue 1, that ambulance that runs out of there, is, you know, one of the busiest in the city. And then, from there, I got the nightcap down at Fire Station 2, we went out on a couple of different runs there at Station 2, so, I want to thank all the firefighters and paramedics down at Station 2 for having me as well. It is really an edifying and eye-opening experience to see just how busy, just how taxing a job that they're doing there in the Fire Department. Last year alone, just to give you some facts and figures about it, we went on a handful of runs in the 18 hours that I was there with the Fire Department, but last year, they did over 15,93911 emergency calls for service, 15,000. That is a number that has exponentially gone up year after year over the past, geez, 20 years. I think we had a small dip in our run volume last year, but generally speaking, over the last 20 to 25 years, that number has just gone up and up and up, and that speaks to the importance of having adequate staffing levels within the department, and also, you know, affording them the best pay, benefits, and secure retirement possible. And the same thing goes for our Police Department as well. I've had the opportunity last year to actually do a ride-along with the PD, Sergeant Steckley and Sergeant Munson were kind enough to take me along on a 12-hour ride-along, and I know my colleague last year, Pro Tem Sampe, did a ride-along with PD as well. And again, when you see, you hear the stories from them about how busy they are, you read the posts on social media when they put something out about, you know, run volumes from the year before, it really doesn't sink in with you until you get to see it and experience it firsthand just how hard our police officers, our firefighters are really working in the city, so, thank you to everyone for all that you do, thank you to all the firefighters and paramedics at Stations 3, 2, and 1, who put up with me for 18 hours this past Thursday, it really is an eye-opening experience. And I think the last thing that I have to say is, how lucky are we after, what, how many Super Bowls have we been through that the Lions haven't made? I think, what, Bobby Lane was, all of them, yes, all of them, since Super Bowl I, the curse of Bobby Lane, I think, maybe, knock on wood here, maybe we're finally getting rid of that hex here, and the same old Lions mentality. It was pretty awesome to see us clown on the Vikings, you know, I think that Vikings coach Kevin O'Connell came in with some bravado into that game, and then he was, they were talking about how many tickets the Vikings fans have bought for the game, and they were promptly met with the Ford Field crowd and some rowdy fans there to silence the Vikings pretty early, so, this is really great, you know, we get the bye week now in the playoffs, this is really exciting, so, go Lions, I think we're all excited for what lies ahead, whoever we end up playing in the second round of the playoffs, but nonetheless, go Lions, and as always, if you need anything from me, I'm available at Councilman Mike McDermott on Facebook, or you can call or text me at 734-890-2146, and for those that I said I'd stay up for and talk to, I look forward to chatting with you. And with that, is our motion to adjourn.